I'd like to call this meeting of the Leger Town Council to order. Please join me in the pleasurable attendance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Plam?
Here.
Mr. Gobordy?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Mrs. Bratton?
Here.
Mr. Soss?
Here.
Pete here, for Nasa?
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. At this time without objection, I am going to move the committee commission and board reports and to hear from our state Senator Kathy Austin ahead of the residents and property owners, so we can send her off on her way. Thank you for coming, Kathy.
Thanks, thank you very much for having me. As you know, I've tried to get out to council meetings, and I've been before. And we just finished the legislative session, and so I wanted to sort of stop by and talk a little bit about, and this is for you. The state aid for Leger is what she has, and the state aid for Leger between what the governor put out and what ended up finally going through was to a positive of $16,000 for Leger. I think that that's important, that we were able to stabilize state aid. Personally, I think that we have to look at ways to increase state aid. We have not gotten there yet, but this last legislative session, we were able to stabilize state aid and increase it minorly. Part of the increase is a piece of money that we did not get at the end of last year, the municipal revenue sharing account. As I'm sure you will remember, last year, the fourth payment was not given out to the towns, and that has been re-appropriated and is in the numbers for this year for that one payment that you were missing from last year. Use it wisely. So, what were some of the things that happened in this legislative session? I did have my, the bills that I was paying attention to. As you know, I'm the Chair of Planning and Development. I appreciate your kind words on affordable housing, and it's something that's still work in progress. But I'm looking at how affordable housing is handled and what the term "affordable" means, and I think it's something that we have to pay attention to. And we did look at a couple of other bills, some got mixed reviews. We had a bill pass through the committee that did not make it to a vote on contracting, and the intention of the bill, it went through several edifications after the committee hearing, but the overall intention ended up being a one-year suspension of property taxes for a new home or model home in order to give contractors the ability to build more and then ultimately sell those homes. It was not intended to not provide property taxes for years until the house was sold, but it would have given those contractors an ability to save taxes for one year while they were in the middle of selling those homes, and provide that model home in particular, with a year of tax abatement. It ultimately did not even get brought up for a vote, but it was a discussion that we had, again, intended to help out sort of the contractors and small business owners that are trying to revamp real estate, and did not make it through. Some of the bills that made it through, and I was telling the audience before, that the last day of the session, I wrote down every bill that I was following that had not made it through, and as we were developing consent calendar, one of the bills that did pass was sex offenders and notifying chief executive officers. It was changed down in the House, and we had to make sure it was brought up again in the Senate, and it was brought up again in the Senate at quarter to 12, just 15 minutes before we were not voting. So that was, I think that that's a good bill. It provides the chief executive officer with notification along with superintendents and the police chiefs that when a sex offender moves into your town. And it just at least gives you the information. You know, it allows, because the person that most people go to, well, they sometimes go to the police chief, or they sometimes go to the superintendent, more often than not, they're going to go to the mayor of the first election and say, "Oh, did you know?" And this was a problem that happened in Norwich, and it also happened in Scotland. So this will provide that the state police have to notify the chief executive officer via fax or email that you have a sex offender moving into your community, either out of the court system, through the probation mechanism, out of parole, through the Department of Correction, or moves from one town to another. So it gives you some additional information. We had several bills that passed through regarding, some very minor municipal mandates have been relieved. You no longer have to report your cell towers to the siding council. And the other one is the charge that the tax collector gets charged on DMV information. In the town of Sprague, it's $715, so it's not a lot of money, even in Leger, even though you're four times the size of Sprague, almost five. It's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, and there are many other mandates that we need to look at removing, and many of them came up that night. There was a bill that passed on police dispatchers, which I believe that Leger is part of the community that's looking at maybe regionalizing their dispatch. And that bill of giving you the authority to do so, should you agree as a group to do so, that passed. There was several bills that passed regarding property taxes and sewer assessments. On the sewer assessment, sewer assessments, what passed was it allowed the Board of Assessment Appeals to hear if someone wants to dispute a sewer assessment that they have, putting one more mechanism at the local level versus going to court. I have talked with people around the town, and the possibility exists on understanding that certain areas of your town may be interested in connecting with sewers, and should Norwich develop their regional sewer system, you would be able to hook in through Preston. There are probably other ways you could hook in through also. I have talked with the USDA, the Rural Development Agency, and they could provide several million dollars in grants and aid to a town the size of Leger to possibly entertain hooking in through the sewer system. It's something that you should let me know, or whomever your representatives are, if you're interested in doing so. I think it's at least an opportunity for you to take advantage of the regional sewer treatment plan that Norwich is putting in. They will have additional capacity for the surrounding towns. And I know that the EEP is interested in a couple of your areas perhaps having sewers. It's something to think about. I would say that there are several things that, see, I love Connecticut, and I know that we have our problems, I get it. But I think that there's some goodness in the state of Connecticut. The facts are that, and I'll read off a few minor facts, that Connecticut is a leader in business research and development. It ranks first per capita. Connecticut is a leader in finance and insurance, ranking second in total employment. Connecticut's highly educated workforce ranks third for population with advanced degrees in homing every one of these. Young people behind me are all planning on going to college or getting some sort of advanced degree. Connecticut's workers are amongst the most productive in the nation. They rank fourth among states. Connecticut ranks sixth in the number of scientists and engineers for 100,000 employees. If Connecticut were its own country, it would rank the sixth most productive in the world as measured by GDP per capita. Connecticut has one of the highest percentages of corporate and divisional headquarters of any state. 14 Fortune 500 companies call our state home. Connecticut ranks seventh as a leader in venture capital deals to develop new small businesses, and Connecticut is a leader in patents, ranking eighth in the nation in patents for 100,000 workers, which means that we certainly like to invent. The Information Technology and Innovation Foundation ranks Connecticut ninth in the nation as a leader in the new economy, and Connecticut is a leading exporter, ranking 10th in per capita exports. So what have we done to capitalize on this at the state level? We worked on establishing a statewide court authority that would coordinate the development of Bridgeport, New Haven, and the London Ports. I think that that helps us out, even though Leger's in Norwich, is in the state, it's not right on the water. You all know that those jobs in that area, or people that live in this town, are going to participate in. We did some business development, we extended the Step Up program. The Step Up program has been very successful. I've been to many of the businesses that have used the Step Up program, and Jobs First, and in particular veterans who have been able to take advantage of that. And I'm not going to reiterate the jobs numbers, I think that that's just, sort of speaks for itself. We did, in passing this last budget, it did come in under the numbers. I personally was happy to see the $55 and the $110 go away. I wasn't happy about the way it went away, but I don't think it should have gone out. I would rather have taken that money, and I think that the debate would have been, should we use it to either pay down debt or increase our payments into our own funded liability? So those are some of the highlights of the last session. I would also say that I was hoping to have word on $15,000 for the dam in the emergency operations plan, the hydrology study for Bush Pond, and I have not gotten that information yet, so I don't have any information to give you on that, and I'm hoping to get that. Another bill that did pass was on scrap metal, and we've now made it that in order for metal that comes from a municipality like catch basins, ribbon rail that often gets stolen, and you hear about it regularly. Lisbon and Rizal had 60-some catch basin covers stolen and brought to a local scrap dealer. It is now illegal for them to take municipal old scrap metal without a letter from the municipality, a municipal letter that's signed by their first elector or mayor, to allow them to get rid of that scrap. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It was a whole lot to happen.
Do any councilors have any questions for our state senator? Wow.
I have a comment.
Sure.
It's good to hear from our state senator. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me. I really appreciate coming, and I really appreciate your questions. I know that I've been able to get some information. Did help out a little bit with the chicken issue that you were having. We have done some information on chickens in Sprague. While we don't allow roosters in the village of Walton, I keep reminding people, you do need roosters if you want to have more chickens, but, you know, some people don't like rooster noises at 5:00 p.m. morning. So we've been very successful at having the little small flats, and then have small farm areas that they can do manure management. And I think that's really ultimately trying to do is do manure management. And I met with them, and I walked a little bit, drove in a car and mustered away. It was cold out. And a piece of property that we are all looking to hopefully establish as a long-term green way over along the schools. I think that's great.
I am disappointed on the bill that didn't pass on having to publish in the newspaper.
I-
That's not small potatoes for a small town. You obviously have that same issue.
I tried to get it brought up, and I did not have the support to get it through the Senate or the House. Some people feel that, for whatever the reason it be, they feel that it's closing off public comment or public information. I had crafted the legislation and even had a compromise language from the Newspaper Association and CCM that would say that, and for those of you who don't know, what we were trying to do was to eliminate the very lengthy legal notices that go in the paper on a variety of municipal issues, whether it's a planning and zoning issue or referendum or a budget. And a lot of the verbiage that's in there is just unnecessary to have, and people don't really read it. It talks about a variety of things, like the town is an equal opportunity employer and participates in affirmative action, and those are sort of things that are not the meat of the legal notice. And so what would have happened was, it would have been a shortened version that carried the intent of the language you're going to have. There's a zoning issue that's going on on property such and such, and it would not, you know, list all the details, but enough of the details, and people could get it off of the town's website, or a copy would be nailed free to them from the town hall if they so chose to get that. On the referendum, it might say, "We're having a referendum on," as you all, you're having a town meeting on Monday, so on Monday, May 19, and it would say the budget numbers are X, Y, and Z, but it wouldn't necessarily have all any other verbiage on there. It would give you enough of the information, but there is not enough support. And I would say that I think that the municipal association needs to do more work in talking to people and getting support. So we pay them to lobby, and even as much as I fought for it, it didn't appear to have the support to get it through, which is unfortunate. You know, I tried to get it through two years now, so I can get it off the committee, but I can't get a vote, and I don't have support.
Well, you understand it because you're a, what is your position?
First amendment.
So you understand the burden. You understand the burden, so we appreciate that. Keep fighting forward for us.
And you know that I looked at the affordability statutes. I have a commitment from, should we all end up back there, obviously, you know, this is an option here, so, you know, I never take anything for granted. But I did, a lot of my work was bipartisan, and I talked with the ranking member of all planning and development, who's Senator Posano, probably going to be either the majority leader or the president of the Senate, depending on what happens again with the elections. And he is willing to work with me on that particular issue. He can say it's something that we should address, and a lot of small towns have the same concerns that you've had here. So, and you can let your elderly rental, we did get the elderly renter we have, open up there, something I consider very important. I'll tell you my last two big bills that I passed this year that I worked really hard on, and a couple of the students were asking, "How do you get bills passed?" I had a woman come to me from Kebrin, who her son was dyslexic, and on the IEP form, it doesn't list dyslexia as a separate form of special needs, and it now will, and it will provide professional development for teachers in recognizing dyslexia. How I got the information was through this young woman, who came and presented her case thoroughly, had done quite a bit of research, had a grassroots movement that swept through Connecticut, had 70 kids come up and testify the day that they had a public hearing on this. The kids also testified. They were a variety of ages, from grammar school all the way through high school, and their parents testified also, but the kids had a special time to testify, and it was the most, according to the education co-chairman, it was the most well-attended session that they've ever had in special education. The other piece of legislation that I got was a piece of legislation that is called Errol's Law. It's a sex abuse prevention program, and it comes from a woman who was sexually abused. She's out of Illinois. It's passed in 14 states. It was the 14th state, it's pending in 25 other states, and she's been to Canada and will be going to Australia for it. What it teaches kids is the difference between a safe touch and an unsafe touch, and a safe secret and an unsafe secret. It does not have sex education as a part of it, it just tells kids that they have a right to have boundaries from whomever may be abusing them. And 90% of all sexual abuse happens from someone the child knows, not from a stranger. We teach stranger danger all the time, but this is something that could have a dramatic impact, and also passed on a five-week basis. So both of those were very well accepted, and it worked on bipartisan, both chambers. So I'm very happy for both of those.
Well, thank you again for being here, and thank you for your service. Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. I really appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, we will hear from any residents or property owners that wish to speak before the council, and your comments are limited to three minutes.
Good evening. Eric Trister, on record. During the last council meeting, Councilor Allen read into the record a partial letter from Attorney Carl Landolina, dated September 13, 2012, regarding the zoning regulations. To refresh everyone's memory, Councilor Allen filled a partial letter with statements, "While I certainly appreciate the time and effort that went into discussing, in my opinion, there is more detail here than is necessary. In fact, in my opinion, the level of detail makes the document difficult to read and difficult to do. While many municipalities are trying to simplify the zoning regulation, this document seems overly complicated." Councilor Allen then chose to not read the rest of the letter, except to say, and I quote, "The letter goes on to identify 61 different bullet points at issue." This statement, that the letter identified 61 bullet points at issue, as flagged by Attorney Landolina, clearly implies that the zoning regulations contain as many as 61 legal petitions. And if the final zoning regulations did indeed contain 61 legal petitions, it means that the zoning commission, and myself as its chairman at the time, are guilty of not decency and should be fired and perhaps tarred and fedded. However, it is what Councilor Allen chose to not quote from Carl Landolina's letter that is disturbing and unfair. First, Councilor Allen misread Attorney Landolina's letter. Attorney Landolina's actually identified 64 legal issues. Second, Councilor Allen failed to state that Attorney Landolina's letter was addressed to me as the chairman of the zoning commission. Because it was addressed to me, it should be obvious Attorney Landolina's letter was prepared in response to my request, which was approved by the zoning commission to provide a legal review of the proposed zoning regulations. Councilor Allen also chose to ignore two important sentences in the letter. The first states, and I quote, "I also understand that you are in the middle of a public hearing on these amendments." And the second, which is on the last page, states, "If you make anything other than minor amendments to the regulations, you cannot and should not close the public hearing until the final version has been available for public inspection for at least 10 days at the town clerk's office." The key words are "final" version. Carl Landolina's letter to the zoning commission is dated September 13, which makes it exceedingly unlikely his comments are also applicable to the final zoning regulations approved five weeks later on October 11. If you take a look at the copy of the record of the disposition that I passed out, you will see that each of the 64 issues is addressed. I am providing this to show the level of care that went into the new zoning regulations. Of the 64 issues, 61 were resolved in accordance with Attorney Landolina's guidance, and three were not adopted for reasons that are described in the handout. The 61 corrections, simplifications, and clarifications were incorporated into the final version of the regulations, and filed with the clerk more than 10 days prior to the last day of the public hearing as required by law. As such, the final approved zoning regulations incorporate virtually all of Carl Landolina's recommended changes, which is one of the many reasons the new regulations were approved by five and zero votes. In my opinion, Councilor Allen's selective omissions from Attorney Landolina's letter, combined with its schedule to state that the zoning commission deliberated each of the 64 issues for inclusion in the final regulations, cast aspersions on the people who worked hard to produce the best possible set of regulations within the budgetary and groundwork constraints that the council imposed. Maybe, just maybe, an apology is due, as you stated. An equally important issue is why are erroneous and misleading statements being made in public by our elected officials without the new zoning regulations? Chairman Davis staved on the record that the new regulations were thicker than the original regulations, and implied by handbooks that are thicker than each of six.
Mr. Trisha, are you wrapping up?
Where may only three kinds of-
You've had your opportunity to talk about this in the past.
Councilor Allen erroneously implied that there are as many as 61 legal petitions in the zoning regulations. The question is, why are our public officials making these types of false and misleading statements regarding the new zoning regulations? I have never represented the new regulations as being perfect. There is always room for improvement, and I, around everyone in this room, want the best possible regulations for our town. So making false and misleading statements in a public forum regarding the regulations is not helpful or constructive. So I have to ask Chairman Davis, why did you state that zoning regulations are thicker than the prior regulations? Councilor Allen, why did you imply that there are as many as 64 legal issues in the zoning regulation? These are legitimate questions, and they deserve a honest answer. Perhaps you will find answers to them in the deliberations on item 13-4 on the agenda this evening.
Are there any other residents and property owners who wish to speak before the council?
Good evening. My name is Steve Lor, I live at 14 Altrast Drive. I just want to start by thanking all of you for your service. I know you're volunteers, and I appreciate it. I'm here tonight with my family, and we're here to ask the town council to consider our request for a supplemental appropriation in order to restore the boys' swim team at Fledrick High School for the 2014-15 season. Our team found out weeks ago, two weeks ago, that the reduction to the Board of Ed budget required cuts to be made to extracurricular activities. We made our voices heard at the May 7 Board of Education meeting, and while they could not reconsider a revision to the cuts, given the urgency of Fledrick's submission to you, they recommended that we, the citizens that were present, seek funds that would be realized by the council due to the reduction in health care costs that will not be required for three teaching physicians that were also cut from the Board of Ed's budget. Their estimation was that $40,000 would be recovered from the health care account, from which we would only require at most $13,000. We also want to stress that this will be the one and only time that we would make this request. We are now acutely aware of our position within the realm of budget constraints, and in the coming season, we will fundraise and attempt to increase participation so that we aren't faced with losing this very important activity. We want the council to understand that all extracurricular activities and sports at Leger High School are not just for fun, but they are important social, physical, and learning experiences for all students there. In closing, we want the council to understand the importance of providing financial assistance in this extenuating circumstance. Not all students find their passions or interests strictly within tax plus. For example, my own son has matured due to his exposure to sports, and he has honed his leadership and commitment skills. He has learned to set and work at reaching performance goals, and now has an interest in pursuing a degree in sports medicine. In addition, many colleges look for well-identified student applicants who have interest in exposure to many different activities. While these concerns are admittedly within the realm of the Board of Ed concerns, we humbly ask you, the town council, to consider making an exception to assist us in solving the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for limiting your comments to less than three minutes. I appreciate it. I know there are lots of folks that want to speak. Are there any other residents or property owners that would wish to speak before the council? Yes?
Good evening. Mike Cherry, 5 Whipperville Drive. I also want to thank the council, especially the planning committee, Mike France, Phil Song, Fred Allen, for all their hard work on the budget. This is the last public meeting before the town meeting on Monday and a referendum on Tuesday. The board's not here, but they also did a yeoman job. One thing that I did notice is, you didn't cut the Board of Education budget by $500,000. hundred thousand dollars. You actually increased last year's budget by five hundred thousand dollars. Unfortunately, most of that is bound up in salaries and benefits and special education funds, so there were some changes that the board had to make to their budget. What's also missing sometimes is the one and a half million dollar increase in the general government budget to cover the cost of health care for the Board of Education budget. So when I look at all those things, I'm amazed at how much you were able to accomplish with a small increase in taxes. And most people say, hey, if we could spread that out over a longer length of time, starting four, five years ago, it would have been much easier. So I understand that. On your agenda tonight, I believe, is some discussions on designation and sale of town-owned property. I fully endorse, and for the last couple of years, planning was looked at, not establishing open space lots that are isolated and small. And I know we have many of those from subdivisions that were planted twenty and thirty years ago. I would recommend that, that, I need to find a public works. They'll never be used as open space, and they just sit there fallow today. And for Steve, I was a non-competitive competitive swimmer in high school.
Are there any other comments from residents or property owners?
Good evening. Curtis Floyd, two fifty-seven Wellhead Road. My question was just with regards to the referendum that's coming up, in regards to the types of questions that could be asked to determine approval or negative vote. It was possible that there actually could be two questions, one asking approval or disapproval of the budget on your side, and the second question asking the residents approval or disapproval on the Board of Education side. I believe that if you gave the residents a better opportunity to understand both sides of the budget, which given the increases or decreases, it would be an opportunity for the residents to vote agreement or disagreement of who they prefer or where the budget should be. As an example, if you put it as one, and it's voted down, you don't know which side of the budget the residents agree or disagree with. If you take it up as two positions, and you want to vote positively or negatively, you at least understand what the best is to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to take a second to respond. There is, Mr. France did some research for us, and it is possible to separate the budgets. It would require, in our case, however, a charter change. And there are a number of towns in the area that do separate the budgets, but it's something, certainly if there's a charter revision commission that they could look into. Obviously, there are pluses and minuses to this. Thank you. Are there any other residents and property owners who would like to speak before the
Denise Cittridge, fifty-nine Wendell Comrie wrote, and I thank you all, and I thank you for some replies to some emails. And also, what I really, tonight, after seeing Catherine Osteen here, is I talked to her about really encouraging people to express, and the town council to express that although magnet schools are wonderful and it offers a lot, it does take away from our town in taxes that are, for people that want to send their children to public schools, it's affecting us. And especially with it being in the day newspaper last week about the thirty-one million dollars, I briefly asked her if that was going to be a concern coming up this year. And she did encourage people to continue, that we really need to have more balanced funding, so that not everybody, either not one side or the other, is hurt by things. Also, as far as special education goes, you know, that really needs to be a state level, not a town level, and that's other thing, those are some other things that I've been communicating with her through email, and I just met her for the first time. So she did encourage me to continue emailing, and I hope, I do support the Board of Education and the town council in the budget, and I thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other residents and property owners wish to speak at this time?
My name is Fred France. I live at seventeen Gordon Drive. I'm here on behalf of the boys' swim team. We were aware two weeks ago of the cuts, and we found out that we were being cut because of a lack of numbers is what we consume and the cost they have. What they have is an assumption of the five thousand dollars, the total cost of thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, where five thousand of that is just an assumed number that they, yes, they position the cost, but they have no reason to live on. Also, two thousand of that would actually become half because we split the time of the pool rental with the sums inside. So in reality, it's four thousand six hundred and eighty-nine and that extra five thousand. So when you're talking in terms of millions of dollars in the budget, I think it'd be very reasonable to save an athletic team that really builds character. And for instance, because we have that second school that we co-op with, it'd be very beneficial if the team stayed, and it would make, it would help us go to college, it would help us grow as young adults. We'd be asking for that thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, but we wouldn't even necessarily need that because we've already made plans to start fundraising to help our cause and to keep the team. We're willing to do whatever it takes to keep this team, but be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents, property owners? Comments of town councilors? To my left, anyone? To my right, Mr. Eichelberg?
A couple of weeks ago, we had what appeared at first to be a pretty significant health emergency at my mother's home, and turned out it was very minor, but we didn't know that at first. But I want to just say thank you to the alleged emergency services, especially to Derek and Kristen who came out, and their professionalism and their care for my mom was excellent. And so again, I just want to say thank you.
Mr. France?
The presentation I did with health insurance cost and total cost of education prompted by a comment that was made near the end of the Board of Ed meeting last week. Next slide, please. I presented this background slide in a previous presentation, but just for those that didn't see it before, the Board of Ed budget doesn't include the total cost of education for the town. The most significant cost, as has been talked about before, is the cost of health care. For background, it was brought over to the general government's side in two thousand and two, so it's been over here for a number of years. Additional significant costs related to personnel, workers comp, non-teacher retirement, the school nurses, and there are good reasons why they're on this side of the, this side of the budget. And finally, there's some in-kind services. An example of that is the debt service, which is all handled on the town's side for school projects and property insurance. There are a number of other smaller in-kind services. Next slide. The comment that was made was brought up in the comments from residents. Essentially, Mr. Strickland said that due to the layoffs, there would be approximately twenty thousand dollars per employee savings, as was estimated by the finance chair. Some background, it's kind of ledgered as self-insured, so it's not the same as purchasing the health insurance plan from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Hartford, or anybody else, where you have a premium set each month, and there's a known quantity of funds that are saved by an employee no longer being with a company. So the town functions essentially as the insurance company paying the health claims directly. What Mr. Strickland was talking about was what they call the allocation rate. And so for each one of our plans, for anybody who has health insurance in a cafeteria-style plan in their employer, you may have different kinds of plans, a full plan, just a dental plan, just vision, or a combination of. We have a similar style plan available to our employees, and based on the cost of that plan that would be in the market, that is what they call the allocation rate. And the percentage contribution by the employee based on negotiated contract is what their share of that is. So there's no direct correlation between that allocation cost and the actual budget and health care cost. How that's calculated for the budget is they take the actual costs for the town over the previous eight months, and they moderate that over the three years to come up with what they expect the cost to be next year, and that's what goes into the budget. So you see, it's not a direct correlation where we can say, well, we have two employees, one took a family plan, one took an individual plan, here's what the allocation rate is, therefore, the savings is X. In addition, like an insurance company, the town assumes all the risk. So the general government side of the budget assumes all the risk for all the town employees, much like an insurance company does. Next slide. To give people an idea, in the current year, we are already over what we had allocated for the current year and eat it into the health care reserve balance we started the fiscal year with. You can see the numbers projected in the table. We project that the Board of Education's share will be about one point one million dollars over what we budgeted based on the previous year's expenses. We started the year with just over a million dollars in the health care reserve account. We now have just over five hundred thousand, and based on the projected costs expected for May and June, we expect to be in the red, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's the current year situation. Next slide. I've shown this slide as well, and it goes to some of the comments concerning what is the total cost of education versus the Board of Ed budget? Has it been funded sufficiently? It's a busy table, but essentially you can see the percentage change at the bottom, ranging from four to thirteen and a half percent over the last four years. You know, what I've used for this for the last three years, the actual expenses, the current year is the projection, which obviously the next two months, it could be lower or higher. And the principal driver of increases in education costs do, on the general government's side, do happen to be the health insurance. All right, next slide, please. This is a slide that was presented in the Board of Ed's presentation, just so you're familiar with, you've seen it before. Next slide. I've taken this data and put it into the table and added to it the cost of educations carried in the general government's side. And when you factor in the total cost of education, you can see that instead of four point three percent, it's actually an eight point eight percent increase. So it essentially grew at the rate of inflation, not half the rate of inflation. And while I would acknowledge that the rest of the cost was due to health insurance, that is a personnel cost, that if you're comparing apples to apples among other towns, that cost is generally in the Board of Education budget. So in order to compare apples to apples, if you're looking at another town that has a five and a half percent increase, and the Board of Ed is, you know, stating as they did this year, is a three and a half percent, those are not the same numbers that they're comparing to. And finally, I want to present the conclusion that I was going to present last week, and appreciate the indulgence of the Board of Ed and giving me extra time to talk. But dealing with the conclusion I was going to give last week regarding extracurricular activities, including athletics and school newspapers, and while I did acknowledge that I was not advocating this week for any particular one, it appears that the Board of Ed, by their actions and statements, believe that education only happens within the construct of a classroom. I would argue that the opportunities, like athletics and the Colonel, provide an opportunity to learn life skills as part of a larger educational environment, including leadership, time management, working to deadlines, and teamwork. In fact, I would equate the value of the Colonel in particular, including the journalism class, to that of any AP class. While the students will not receive college credit for their efforts, and there's no test that they can take to get that, they gain some of the same educational benefits of the challenging environment of an AP class. We need to remember that statistically, half the students that walk through the doors of high school in ninth grade will not complete a bachelor's degree within seven years, which is the statistic they use to measure. In the state of Connecticut, in fact, twenty to twenty-five percent won't even graduate. Of those that do graduate, only about seventy-five percent will attend college. And more AP classes are not going to help that forty percent of entering ninth graders that are non-college-bound, but opportunities like the Colonel just might. I think that we need to keep the AP class we have, and we also need to consider, there's another segment of the high school population, that as we look at the goal of Common Core, whether you agree or disagree with it, is to plan for college or career, we need to make sure that we are also counting that career opportunity coming out of high school and not lose the opportunities that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors wish to speak?
Okay, three items. First, I would like to read in part from a speech by Representative Joe Courtney in the U.S. House of Representatives. Mr. Courtney said, "Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor a small-town hero. After twenty years of exceptional service, Theodore Day has earned his life membership to the Gales Ferry Fire Department, volunteer fire department. Ted became a volunteer firefighter with the department in nineteen ninety-four. Since then, he has logged in twenty-one thousand hours serving the residents of the village of Gales Ferry in the town of Ledger, Connecticut. Ted has responded to over seventeen hundred emergencies, including fires, motor vehicle crashes, and hazardous materials releases. His skills and sharp instincts have been an asset to the department, enabling Ted to save lives and minimize damage to property." And I think on behalf of the council, we would certainly like to congratulate Ted and his family. My second item is Mike DiMauro from the New London Day chose to write three negative, not one in a week, but three negative articles about the town of Ledger. And the third article, he made reference to a former Board of Education member, having emailed him, and it appeared that several people thought I was the former Board of Education member, and I would just say I would not have lowered myself to respond to that article in the New London Day. So it was not me. And then lastly, last week, while looking at the Board of Education's budget, I discovered a sixty-five thousand dollar error, and so the Board of Education actually has sixty-five thousand dollars to reallocate, and perhaps those that are looking for some funds to be restored might consider going to, back to the Board of Ed and ask them to consider looking at that, where that sixty-five thousand is going to be reallocated. Okay, now, moving on, review and approval of minutes. Someone like to make a motion?
Second.
Okay, we actually have two. Is it for both?
I'm moving both.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. We provided some corrections. Roxanne, would you call the room?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gaudy?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dumbrowski?
Good thing.
Seven favor, one extension.
Motion carries. Communications and referrals you have, councils. Oh, I have written down building with the question mark. What was the referral that I wanted to remind myself of that came in? Anybody remember?
This is a trick question.
I think it was, yes.
Have there been Board of Education's matter regarding?
It was, thank you. And that was being referred to finance.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You were also referred to admin, the resolution. I'm trying to think what that was.
It's probably on the list.
It could be on the list.
Thank you. Okay, Administration Committee, Mr. Eichelberg?
Administration Committee met earlier this evening. We considered a number of items. A couple of weeks ago, actually about a month ago, we heard a presentation or a comment from a citizen regarding an issue with some dogs that were causing a problem. And I had asked at the time that the issue be referred to the Administration Committee. We did meet tonight to talk about that. Mayor Adelico was there. We are going in the future, in the coming months, we're going to be talking quite a bit more about this, trying to provide some education to the public on what can be done, what should be done with nuisance dogs. So we also talked about, we moved forward a resolution regarding the assumption of liability for use of town facilities by organizations or groups. We moved forward the appointment of members to the ad hoc committee to review zoning regulations. We moved forward a resolution establishing a requirement that committees, commissions, and boards post their minutes on the town website so that they can be reviewed by the citizens. And we also moved forward a proposed Town of Ledger fraud policy, something that's come up several times over the years. We finally moved this forward, and that's what we met on tonight.
Thank you. And those items mostly are on our agenda?
Yes.
Many of them. Finance?
Other than the items that are on the agenda, Finance Committee met last week in the regular meeting. We also had a special meeting tonight to deal with one issue that is on the agenda. Other than what is on the agenda, we continue a discussion relating to a resolution establishing an administrative department of benefits. The mayor's come to the five.
The mayor's come to the Finance Committee several times, working through the language of that. We expect the next meeting or two, we will have that finalized.
Thank you. Information Technology.
Information Technology met last week. I would like to thank the mayor for facilitating a meeting we had with the, in the Land Use Office with Roseanne Katozki and Joe Larkin, supported by the MIS Director Regina Burlet and Justin Doob, which they actually provided a hand-on demonstration on the permitting process using the kiosk. I think Chairman Gabori, Council of Gabori got, yeah, Chairman.
Council of Gabori got to put a new roof on his house and he's still waiting for Public Works to show off.
That's right. Is that in the budget?
I don't know what Council of Eichelberg had.
Mine was turned down.
Yours was denied. I had a new shed put in. Unfortunately, I found out that I needed to go to Wetlands and, I hope I never have to replace my shed. But it was very insightful. I knew the permitting process from previous experience, but it was really, obviously you can see the hands-on, what the applicant would have to do when they go up to the kiosk to fill in, how the receipt gets printed out and supplied to the applicant, and then how it goes through email chain to each of the corresponding parties, the building officials, zoning enforcement officer, the Wetlands enforcement officer, WPCA, the tax collector, so that they get notification and led light so that they have to go review this application. The one part that they're still working on is for the zoning application, it's still a paper form, but they are working to add that into the kiosk so that the zoning permit would also be filed and the Wetlands permit would also be filed through the kiosses also. The only question that we had at the end of the presentation was that right now WPCA gets notified to see if there's any outstanding, and that the current bills are up to date with our changing over to rotten utilities that the MIS Director is working with rotten utilities so that that information change should go over to them for billing to verify that they're up to date prior to pulling a billing permit. Other than that, we have one item on the county agenda for later tonight and that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would just add to that, you know, you consider in the last four years, the E presence in the Town of Ledger, a small town the size of Ledger, we have taken some giant steps forward and going in, going through that permitting process and, you know, just watching how everything has been electronic, move forward. We're no longer putting out permits in, you know, in scrap and stone. It's just, it's amazing how many steps we've taken in the last couple of years and, you know, I want to congratulate the mayor and, you know, this council for taking those efforts.
Land use planning, Public Works.
Other than several items that we have on the agenda for tonight for moving forward for public hearing, we, that's pretty much all we did. We did get an update for the Order of 45, that the planning of zoning right now, they have a draft review that they're updating, that they're reviewing, and hopefully we'll have it at our next meeting for the Land Use Committee to look at. Other than that, everything else is, I believe, on the agenda or forward to other committees, such as the ordinance for citation for the Wetlands Commission. Yeah, everything else is on the agenda for tonight.
Any other, any questions? Liaison reports, I'll start on the left. Any liaison reports on the left?
What's in?
He's on the right.
I see. I just do it as one day.
I'm looking right at this very heavy, carefully constructed matrix. You never peek it over the shoulder.
I could smack you.
Turn my mic off.
Liaison reports on the right, yes.
Was somebody?
No, go ahead.
This is on the Board of Education meeting, which took place a week ago, tonight, May 7th. Meeting started a little bit differently in that it began with response to public comments that had been made previously, I think most of all at the informational meeting. This consisted of the Finance Committee Chair presenting, among other things, a list of all district administrators. He stated that Ledger is as lean or leaner than other districts. Each position was explained and this included a limited list of each set of responsibilities. In addressing the extra or co-curricular items on the list of possible cuts, he emphasized that the Board of Ed was looking for the least injurious way to reduce the budget to that passed by the Town Council. During public comments, there were multiple pleas to save each of the cuts to athletics and to the print version of the Colonel magazine. There were several requests that the decision on specific cuts be delayed to allow for consideration of the comments the Board of Ed was just hearing, but it was explained that with the budget vote less than two weeks away, that it was not possible to have that postponement. There were suggestions for cuts to a number of other areas besides those currently on the table, including the staff and the length of the school year. Mrs. Patterson in the superintendent's report indicated the documents on plans for Ledger Middle School are due to the state by mid-June and were being prepared. A number of comments from Board of Ed members, one had to do with the One Book One Region, which is being sponsored by Agricultural Sciences this year and is, does involve agriculture. They thanked Principal Fagan and Athletic Director Bunicor for their letter to the day responding to a column critical of Ledger. I think we can all figure out what that column was. It was also noted that this was Teacher Appreciation Week, Military Family Appreciation Month, and Nursing Appreciation Week. Several members strongly encouraged the public, including the many who spoke during public comments, to get involved in the budget discussions earlier in the process. The Facilities Committee will be making building recommendations in the next few weeks and they encourage all interested parties to attend their meetings inasmuch as these recommendations could have a significant impact on the town. What they're talking about are very, potentially very expensive projects and while people get involved at meetings such as the information meeting on the budget, sometimes I gathered that meetings which involve these tremendous expenses don't necessarily draw the interest that they seem to be worthy of. Leaf Dinner is May 22nd at Lake of Isles and on May 15th, the High School Chapter of FFA will hold its award night. The Board of Ed received a number of emails regarding the budget. Also, they emphasized there's, the Get to Know Your Town tours of Ledger will be starting soon. I'm not as familiar with those as some of you might be, but sounded interesting. Under unfinished business, the Board voted to cancel current policy on monies in school buildings and activity fund management and to replace them with Policy 3453 on school activity funds. It was stated that this policy establishes more specific responsibilities and protocols and is more in keeping with policies on these matters in other districts. Under new business, the Finance Committee Chair reviewed the PowerPoint from the public informational meeting on the proposed budget and discussed additional cuts in the new motion. The Board voted 7-0 with one abstention to pass the motion as amended to reduce the Board's proposed budget by $495,000 in accordance with the cut made recently by the Town Council. The motion included the following cuts: $75,000 teacher turnover, $151,000 from tutors, $28,000 plus from academic support and powers at LMS, $14,000 plus from health insurance reimbursements, $74,000 from regular education bus runs, including both in-town and to two magnet schools, $5,500 from new technology hardware, over $36,000 from LHS by canceling boys swimming, golf, freshman boys soccer, and the hard copy of the Colonel, $28,300 for magnet school tuition, $21,000 from a part-time secretary at LHS, $38,000, nearly $39,000 from a part-time social studies teacher at LMS, and $22,000 from a part-time science teacher at Ledger Middle. And at this point, the Board entered executive session. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
I just wanted to elaborate on the Know Your Town. Okay, two years ago, the library director and myself did put this program on, it's called Know Your Town. It was broken down into seven segments and we visited different parts of the town government and met a number of the volunteers and the employees who work here. We visited the Public Safety Building and people got to touch ambulances and saw firemen actually doing training. We went to the Senior Citizens Building. We met here in Town Hall with a number of town employees and I know this time we'll check out the permitting process on the machines. So anyway, that is coming up in the fall. There will be plenty of publicity about it. So we're hoping to introduce new people and others to the town government.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gabori? Mr. France, Building Committee?
Building Committee met a week ago Monday covering three projects. First, the Algen Heights Water Project. The pump station, concrete work is complete. The tenant delivery for the pump itself is scheduled for tomorrow or near future. They still have electrical connecting and piping and expect it to be up in operation mid-June as of that meeting. Board of Education, project, which is the middle school expansion and consolidation of the elementary schools. There had been some discussion in the Board of Ed about separating those projects out and discussing the Building Committee. They have since come back and decided that it's best to keep them together and they're looking to have an informational meeting on May 21st, a week from today. So if you want to find out more about what's going on on those projects, they will have that, it'll be at the media center at the part of the regular meeting. In addition, they're planning to make the decision on which elementary school will close, their first meeting in June, June 4th. So that's the timeline right now and they're looking to come to the council and request a November referendum for that decision. So that's their large plan right now. They're just looking at putting together all the specs that are required as part of the submittal and there's some question about trying to get them in before June 30th, which is a deadline for the state to lock in a rate and hold the place and the superintendent was going to verify that process. The Police Facility project, I think the mayor will go into some detail on that, but the big topic of discussion was septic system design. So for anybody who's built a house, they know the fun of that, but that is the principal issue of the day and is potentially a significant delay in the project as we gather data. Let the mayor expand on that, what's happening, interview in a week and a half. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. France? Mr. Soms, WPCA?
WPCA has not met since the last Town Council meeting and we just heard the update on the water project in Algen Heights, so I have nothing further to add.
Anyone else? Okay, there's no old business. Would anybody like to? Oh, I skipped right over you, Mayor Rodolico.
That's okay.
Mayor Rodolico.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Davis. I was late this evening because I had the privilege of speaking at the Ledger FFA Awards Night and I was very impressed by their organization and just the program and the enthusiasm in the program. Last week, I attended at the monthly School Readiness Council meeting. Because of the name, I know, I had no idea what it was, but I've been involved on the periphery for about a year now, but we should really need to know and understand what that is. And what it is, is right now it's a grant program funded by the state in its, I won't say it's in its entirety, but for the most part, that funds pre-K, a pre-K program here in Ledger and also is available to private providers, of which we have one right now in the town. So right now it is a, I think it's a very, very good program because it brings together private and public services. I also signed a contract for the funding of the program, which will be for two years. However, I think the town needs to be aware and begin discussion about the future of this program. For example, Preston, if you, if you looked, Preston yesterday defeated their budget and one of the controversial issues there was the pre-K program, which they were estimating to cost $185,000. If you extrapolate that for the town of Ledger, you're talking about a half a million dollars for a universal mandatory program. So again, it's the type of thing that we see and we know how these things, you know, grow and how they take on a life of their own. For now, I think it's, it's serving our, our community very well. It's giving our community choice. They have really three choices, the public program, the privately subsidized program, and all of the other schools that are available. I attended along with the Human Resources Administrator and Finance Director, a meeting with our health insurance advisor, Bob Lindberg, where he reviewed options for our health, the town's health insurance policy. We did a request for quote and we have, we had four, I believe, four or five takers that came to us with proposals. Of course, it's very complicated because of all of the options you have in those, but he's continuing his, his analysis of the quotes and will provide input to the Town Council by next week's Finance Committee meeting. I found the three recent columns by Mr. DiMauro in the day to be inaccurate, misleading, and crude, and I've expressed that to the day's management. It should be understood that this series was supposedly initiated by a conversation Mr. DiMauro had with a town official. Since we can't confirm that conversation, we can only assume that it did happen and that the so-called official was misquoted or did not know what they were talking about. But it reinforces the need for town employees to be cautious in dealing with citizens and with the media, and I mentioned this at the meeting last, at the last council meeting. And for that reason, I've issued a directive to our town government staff that all communication must be cleared through my office. But there's a larger issue here and that is, and I think that it's relevant to the current budget discussion we're having here. And that is that we need to, we need to have a discussion and we need to respect the many ingredients that make up an excellent school system. For example, Mr. DiMauro's hometown of East Line made a much larger, or a larger reduction to the increase in its Board of Ed budget, but he has no concerns for that because it didn't significantly touch sports. However, it, per the reports in his paper, it will result in cuts to teaching positions and increased class size. So I think we need to learn from this in our discussions, learn from this unfortunate piece of yellow journalism, that the discussions we need to have, and it takes off again on some of the other comments that were made, about looking at all of the pieces of what makes up an education system, having an honest debate about what we need to provide and how to provide that. And I think that, that's a helpful discussion that's already begun. Finally, the new, if you see all the digging around here, the new water line has been installed from, from the main on Colonel Ledger Highway here directly to the Town Hall. That was done in one day yesterday. Today, they began the installation for the annex. They can't complete that, they could have completed that in one day except for the fact that it cuts across the driveway, so you can't do that during the week and that part will be done on the weekend. In addition to that and bringing that, what that will allow us to do is to then isolate the water from the height, from the school, Ledger Center School to here, except I forgot to mention that in doing that, when we shut off the water, we realized that that water also goes to the dime savings bank. So now we have to reroute that. I think that should be pretty simple. The pipes are pretty close together. But again, that, we should be all set with that. We can then turn the water off and then we can begin the monitoring of the site next door. You'll see some white pipes sticking out. They're going to be monitoring groundwater and hopefully what we'll see when we turn the water off is that that groundwater comes down because of all the water that we've been losing through the leak. Also, they took PERC test samples so they can check for the drainage ability of this, of this property. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mayor Rodolico? Mr. S?
Yes, I'm interested in the pre-K program that you mentioned. I thought that we had one, but it was for special needs children. Or is this for any child?
Yes, it is. And, you know, I asked the question many times because it takes a little while to sink in, but no, it's open, there's a limited number of seats and you'll see every year that the governor tries to increase the number of seats available. It is not necessarily limited to that. It's open to people, it's a lottery system.
So is this, is this, do parents pay for this?
Yeah, it's a sliding scale, yes.
Okay.
And anyone who takes funds, like the private school that takes it, would similarly have a sliding scale. So it's not, it's not free. Parents do pay for this, yes.
Okay, and is it able to, between the public and private, is it able to accommodate, I'm going to say the four-year-olds in town who want to go?
I'm not hearing that we're turning many people away. This is my second year involved in it. I thought last year they actually had some trouble actually filling the positions. I thought last year they actually had some trouble actually filling the positions. I think there's three, I'm going to say the 60 capacity here at the school, but I haven't heard there's been any issues with that.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yes, may I just, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Solms was ahead of me, please.
Okay. I just wanted to compliment the mayor. He ran for election under, one of his campaign promises was transparent and open government. And I agree with the councillor, the chairman's comments that have been made previously. I agree with the mayor's comments about the unfortunate journalism this town has experienced this week. And this is, having to have all media contact go through the mayor's office is a direct result of journalism like that. And I also want to say that it would appear to people watching and reading these articles and hearing the pleas for, please don't cut this part of the budget, it would appear that this town is in major dissension. My point is this: budgets are difficult. The Board of Ed worked very hard, the mayor worked very hard, the town council worked very hard, and while we don't all agree, when we have to make cuts, not everyone is happy. But I hope that the residents will vote for this budget next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, just on councillor McGrath's question about the special ed preschool, to best of my knowledge, that continues to exist. It's for special education students along with some of their regular ed peers, just as a workup to it, but that's not the same program that the mayor's talking about.
Oh, okay.
But to the best of my knowledge, it continues to exist.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eichelberg?
I'm going to amend non-councillor Solms' statement. For or against, please come out and vote next Tuesday. For.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Okay, now I'll move on to, there is no old business. New business, would anybody like to amend the agenda at this time? Anybody like to remove anything from the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Administration.
Okay, bear with me on this. I'd like to move to appoint members ad hoc committee to review the zoning regulations in accordance with the membership structure provided in the resolution establishing an ad hoc committee to review the zoning regulations for the town of Ledyard as adopted on April 23rd, 2014 as follows. Two members from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Nathaniel Woody, unaffiliated of 777 Long Cove Road, Gales Ferry, Mr. Michael Cherry, Republican of 5, Whipper Will Drive, Gales Ferry, one member from the town council, Mr. Kevin Dombrowski, Republican of 84, Town Farm Road, Ledyard, one member from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Richard Murphy, Democrat of 6 Ravenwood Row, Gales Ferry, one member from the Community at Large, Mr. James Mandeville, Democrat of 12, Devonshire Drive, Gales Ferry, and one staff member from the Town's Land Use Department to serve as an ex officio member, non-voting member, Mr. Joseph Larkin, zoning enforcement officer.
Second. Discussion.
You know, we've been hearing about this for a little while. This is the ad hoc committee that's going to review the zoning regulations and hopefully put forward something that's a little bit more palatable, and these are the members.
I also have asked Mr. Gabori to serve as liaison, and he has agreed to do that. Any other discussion? Roxanne?
I have a comment. I first want to say I think this is an excellent panel. We've got some fantastic experience on this proposed committee. We did have some discussion, or at least I had some discussion, about two members from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the amount of time that Mr. Mike Cherry would have to spend as chairman if he were also on this committee. So I was curious whether there was no other choice available other than Mr. Cherry?
This is who was put forward by Planning and Zoning.
By Planning and Zoning, okay.
Any other questions? There were other applications, is that correct?
There were two other, three other applications for Citizen at Large.
Yeah. Yeah, my concern, and, you know, if Planning and Zoning put forward those two people, then that's what they put forward, so.
Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Finance Committee?
A motion to grant a bid waiver to Freightliner of Hartford in an amount of up to $166,000 for the purchase of a 2015 Freightliner 114 SD dump truck outfitted with a Tenko All-Season Body and Hanky Full Trip Plow.
Second.
Discussion.
It was just a backfield discussion from the committee. There was a comment raised that a couple of years ago, we purchased a similar truck for about $20,000 less. There were a couple of distinct differences, which are included in the back of file, but essentially, the $20,000, half of that was made up because there was no plow on the last one, it was not required. And there were a number of other, both performance as well as optional characteristics, that made up the additional approximately $10,000 to $12,000. And where that comes from, and why they have to get a bid waiver, the options if you go out for bid would be having three bids or use an agreed-to location, like the, for instance, the state bid list. There are a number of things that we have within our purchasing ordinance where we can just purchase off the list because they've already driven down the price. The vehicle that is available on the state bid list, other towns in the area provided information that they have not had good success with that vehicle. We purchased recently the Freightliner two years ago and have good success with it and felt this was a good solution. The other benefit is it happens to be sitting on a lot today, so we have no delay. We can go pick it up as soon as it's approved.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Make a motion to authorize up to $5,000 from CNR account 210-20551-54325, fire apparatus to repair the Gales Ferry Ladder Truck R25, body corrosion, rust.
Second.
Discussion.
Just briefly, this is a continuation of the maintenance the Gales Ferry Fire Department's doing, an attempt to extend the life of the trucks in delay, having to replace them. We have done that over the last couple of years in a very cost-effective manner. Chief Sukon has brought forward a number of opportunities for that and is continuing to maintain the vehicle and extending their life, which is decreasing the, or delaying the purchase of additional vehicles.
Any further discussion? Always appreciate Chief Sukon coming when there's an item on the agenda. Thank you. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Make a motion to close funded 0220 and move remaining balance in the amount of $18,272.85 to fund 0210 and appropriate the entire amount to account 2109-0305-58915, CNR, undesigned as recommended by the auditors.
Second.
Discussion.
Just briefly, this is money that's been in essentially the bank account of the town. The auditors for several years have looked at this account, been no activity. Due to the length it's been there, there's no inability to determine what the source of the money was or if there were any restrictions on it. It's order to clarify and provide greater clarity to where that money would go, is to transfer into CNR, which is capital non-recurring, and then account for it from there.
Thank you. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Make a motion to appoint McGlady LP to conduct auditing services for the general government, WPCA, in schools for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, at a cost of $50,500 and $20,050 at the cost of $50,500, with two additional subsequent option years in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 11 of the Town Charter, and as a result of bid number 2014-09, auditing services. In addition, grant a bid waiver to McGlady, McGlady, due to receiving fewer than three bids.
Second.
Discussion.
Just briefly, it's a routine, each year we have to appoint an auditing firm. We send it out for bid. The reason for the bid waiver, as is stated, per purchasing orders, you must have three bids or grant a bid waiver. The choice of McGlady over the other competitor was made by the recommendation of the Finance Director who looked at both firms and received input from other towns who'd used both and felt that this was the best choice.
Good. Any questions?
Just a comment, that we did ask, I'm always, I think we're all sensitive to bid waivers, and we did ask appropriate questions of the town professionals about their reasons for requesting a bid waiver, and I was comfortable, I think we're all comfortable with their reasons given.
Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Solms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
Make a motion to set a public hearing date to be held on May 28, 2014, at 6:00 PM to receive comments and recommendations regarding a proposed lease agreement between the town of Ledyard and Make Up By CG LLC to lease space at the Gales Ferry Landing located at 7 Hurlebutt Road and in accordance with CGS 7163E.
Second.
Discussion?
This is...
For a public hearing?
This is just for a public hearing.
Okay, I'll save you the discussion.
I would, you know, with regard to this whole thing, I would like to say, though, that, you know, and Kevin knows this well, having spent years on EDC trying to unload that property, it is just so refreshing to see this coming forward and really becoming a part of the town and not just an empty hulk sitting there. It has so much potential at this point.
Nice comment. Yes.
I'll just add one more thing to that, that with this, when we get to this point, with this lease, it'll leave us one vacancy in there, but equally important, there is a meeting room that's available to all citizens in the school so that if people need to use a room to meet with groups of 10, 20 people, they can do so, and it's a benefit to what we have in town. It's a resource.
We may want to call this the Gales Ferry Mini-Mo.
Well...
No, no.
Thank you.
And I'll comment on the name. I'm glad that we no longer have to say Gales Ferry Landing, formerly known as Gales Ferry...
The old Gales Ferry.
Gales Ferry School and the Gales Ferry, something in between. I'm glad we now know it as Gales Ferry Landing. We no longer have to give all the formerly known as...
Formerly known as, yeah.
It's almost like it had an alias.
Thanks for reminding us.
Well, I would just like to add that, you know, occasionally somebody will still say, well, you know, we still have that old Gales Ferry School sitting there empty, and it always gets my hackles up, so.
You're empty about that.
I would say to, you know, share the news on what a good success that has been. Any other discussion?
and 2015 at the cost of $50,500, with two additional subsequent option years in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 11 of the Town Charter, and as a result of bid number 2014-09, auditing services. In addition, grant a bid waiver to McGlady, McGlady due to receiving fewer than three bids.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, it's a routine. Each year we have to appoint an auditing firm, we send it out for bid, and the reason for the bid waiver, as is stated, per, purchasing orders, you must have three bids or grant a bid waiver. The choice of McGlady over the other competitor was made by the recommendation of Finance Director who looked at both, both firms and received input from other towns who'd used both and felt that this was the best choice.
Good. Any questions?
Just a comment, the, we did ask, I'm always, I think we're all sensitive to bid waivers, and we did ask appropriate questions of the town professionals about their reasons for requesting a bid waiver, and I was comfortable, I think we're all comfortable with their reasons given.
Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number 13?
A motion to accept 10.28 acres of open space subdivision, number 530, at Four Hill Top Drive.
Second.
Discussion?
It's simple, this was a subdivision application that required subdivision and open space.